Educating, Informing, Serving. FEC TV, Keeping Government Honest.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, welcome everybody. It's Monday, May 17th at 6:00 PM at the Town Hall. Code meeting to order. Motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
So who?
You have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have just one minute today, and that's the third.
That's it.
One with the two copies. Okay, so, of the many additions or corrections, the minutes.
Mr. Chair, you have an addition.
Okay.
I would like to move that we, in addition to adopting the minutes as they are, add a copy of the response letter to V-Trans for the public record. And I have a copy of the response letter for the select board members. We sent, if Bill sent this out to you, just in case you have that chance to look at it.
Any discussion on any of this to the agenda?
It would be added to the minutes, please. Of the...
Just a point of information from the administrator, is this in public record anyway?
Yeah, it doesn't need to be on there, but it's up to you, whatever you want to do.
But it is public record now, or...
Right, yeah.
I don't have an issue with that, so I guess...
Suzanne, are you thinking it to, and by the number, does it go under a particular number, or...
Yes, it does, thank you. So it would go under the whole topic of the walking grid.
Oh, number nine?
Yeah. And if you recall, what happened is, the minutes replied, the motion that was made to make it to edits to the response letter, and the response letter actually subsequently Harvard the, and that was, I think it'd be good idea to attach it to the minutes, just as a tie to that number dot discussion.
Any comments, additional comments? Any additional corrections to the minutes? Not all in favor of adding the response to the D-Trans letter to the minutes? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I don't have a motion. I didn't get a motion.
I, I made the motion.
Suzanne made the motion to hand the letter to the minutes.
Yeah, and to the record.
I need a second then. Kathy? Thanks Kathy.
That was a good response that you did, Bill, on that, excellent.
Yeah, so I think you know that. Will you grab that out of your desk?
I am.
I want to report, we have to certify the town road and bridge standards, and the paperwork that was passed to everybody. Does anybody have any comments about it? If not, it's only a motion that we accept the certification compliance as presented. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So that's done. You have to, to vote too, and you can give us a go. The next item is gravel and stone. Everybody have any comments? Do you want to say anything about it? Is it a spreadsheet here?
Bill put it on the sheet for all the ones that did the reply for the pricing. Happened to be that the ones that replied, um, were still the cheapest ones, ground, which is P&amp;L, which is decent sand and gravel, and Susawson, Saint Peers, next in line, but when you add in the gravel pine to go there, it's gonna be a lot more time to do that. So if you guys still wanna just keep it the way you bend and buy from the local ones with the prices that are cheaper, or if you wanna put up on these, who they did, I guess.
I think all you wanted this for was just to see what, what the people were tracking in prices. The one thing I haven't done is, the ones that were bent after it come...
If you do look right underneath it, John, and it's been converted. So on there is like Newport Sand and Gravel, it says 965.
That's great, okay.
Right underneath it, it's still having conversion.
Okay.
I just wanted to see a comparison of what we were paying versus what we will be paying in the future. Okay, so we all paid or some?
Mr. Jim, I would like to ask a couple of questions. First of all, I think this is a great spreadsheet. I think Danny and Bill are putting it together.
Bill with the most.
It really just gives all this a lot more visibility. I have a couple of questions, please. With respect to the P&amp;L, is it possible to get a delivered price for that?
Yeah, he didn't submit the, but I can ask him.
That'd be great. And this time, we signed a warrant for the one-inch ledge stone, I believe that's what it's called, $16 a yard. But is that on here, the one-inch, or does that need to be added?
I think that said, Davey, one-inch, yes, grade, maybe?
One-inch, that would've been from Susawson, I'm gonna have to look at them.
Okay, that'd be great.
They might be old, and they might be in ways, because he doesn't build very finely.
Okay, thank you, Dan.
What was the first thing you wanted from P&amp;L? I'm sorry.
The delivered price.
No, same here, was it not?
No, P&amp;L.
P&amp;L. Can we, can we put the stone, that around? Am I saying it right?
Do you have your quality and your quantity for P&amp;L or not?
That's why sometimes I will buy, you know, from Susawson instead of Eastman, just because of the material, they're like better out of the different pits, so it depends on what it is. Sometimes I will spend a little bit more, but it's all because of the quality of it at the time.
There is something that's on the agenda, because it only came in, agreed today, because we did get the paving grant, two meters and some odd thousand. I think, since the next meeting is the June 7th, we, can we have a motion to put this project out of bid, so that you can get some support?
Can we have a wisdom discussion?
Yeah, I mean, let's discuss it. It's the 121, Danny, you wanted to touch that, wasn't you?
So what we submitted to the state is from the Cambridge Bridge, up through to the next bridge, which is by the St. Max.
That's Cecil, isn't it?
That's the bridge.
No, no, that's Bridge 18. Cecil's the next one.
So it's between the two bridges, basically, which is actually grinding it up, portions of it, and then just resurfacing the portion, so it's kind of a mix, a little bit like we did on 35 over the Chester Town Line, so probably would be done that way, and the rest, I think probably might be some milling. But we put it out for bid, and we always bid stuff by the foot and by the ton, so if it comes in under what we have money there, we will extend the distance that we go, but we will not do that until we see what the bids are. So we might decide if there's enough money still in that bid to go, maybe to add this town line on the other end, or if I come across a bridge and come up through other ways further. That's how we've always done it in the past, we just go as far as the money lasts, but we try to pick a spot where the building's in close, and then we put our paving money toward the matching part, and then if we decide to go further, where you use the difference where we have in the account for that. I'm not sure what that, the amount is in there.
Much, it's close, it could be probably dollars, but I think somewhere around a hundred thousand, I think.
Yeah.
And then 20%, I think the match is a 40,000, is that what makes the match?
Yes.
20,000 is in labor and stuff, correct?
Some of it will be in pounds, yes, and so...
Okay, so basically, if we had 100,000, we plus, we have to only take out 20,000 of the 100, which we could be, it's 8,000 left.
Right. Which we may decide if the prices come in good, with what oil prices are doing, we'll see that happening, but we might decide here, you don't go all the way to the town line, then that hole in the town, up to that bridge is done. But we decide that once the bids come in, how much really can you go?
If we don't bid, we don't know what.
Right. We always put in there approximate footage, and somebody bids, we buy the ton, and someone by the foot for the drying part, for the milling part, bid, and then we just figure it out.
So if somebody make a motion that we, if this project, obviously did...
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of putting the 121 paving project out of the bid, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Anybody have any, any highlights?
I have to go a little bit. So Joe had asked me last week about, with everything going up about salt, so I called the salt company that we bought from last year, which was the low price, Matt, the local guy. That price is still good. We had a surplus in the salt budget, so I ordered 300 tons to put in the salt shed that will go toward next winter, rather than just with the oil prices in shorts, it's gonna go up, it was $70 a ton, which we've been paying for this last year. So I did do that, so that would be, you got 21,000 taken out of the liner for the salt, which is 23, I think, in there. The sand, there's a surplus right now, 26,000 in sand, but what we're running into is that we need to start hydroseeding or mulching where we ditch. Anything over 31 slope, you have to hydroseed, or pin a mat into it. So I'd like to build a hydroseeder. We priced them, I think we could build them for a lot less money, because it's just a pump and a tank, and a bunch of plumbing that goes on it. Figure around $2,500 is what roughly the cost to build the tank, so we can hydroseed. I would take that out of the sand surplus, if that's okay. When I code the slips, it's still gonna be coated under equipment, so it's gonna show negative there, but at the end of the year, the balance settled with the surpluses.
Yeah, tell them that it's not a state requirement.
It is required from under the Brooklyn Bridge standards that you're signing. They just get much more strict on it. This wasn't within three days after we started to cover it up. And culverts have become reveal price wise. I just found out late today, I think they're still honoring the state pricing on the culverts, but it's not gonna last long. It's about four weeks to get culverts, they don't have any salt. They're tripling in price. So I would like to make a good portion of that remaining part of the sand in this year, and buy a bunch of culverts, because our budget won't be in effect for another month and a half, and I don't know where you're getting culverts then. So I'd like to buy at least enough, what I'm feeling, that they're gonna be in till summer.
I know culverts, I know from J.D. Gregory, he's doing the project for me right now, he wants, he wants to hold you guys hands on, because, like I told him, that you're gonna break down.
The reason I found out, I was hitting four-inch superplate today, and normally that ground $9 or 10 foot, that's one, almost, a little over $28 right now, for that same piece of land, in a year's time. It's going up fast.
Mr. Chair, I would that we allow Danny to take out the sand line item, the cost of building the hydroseeder, and to purchase the culverts that he needs to...
Do you have a second?
Second.
Do you have any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I didn't get the second, I'm sorry.
John?
Thanks, John.
The last thing I have is, on the lead road, on the Class 4 section, they did a bunch of logging up in there. Need to find out if they're done logging up there, and if they're gonna go through, clean the water barriers, and where they left the town road, what they're gonna do with that. It's sacking their road, different parts of the Class 4. I realize that we're gonna have to go up ourselves and do some work for that Class 4, we haven't done anything since, I re, but we gotta find out if they're done, and how much they're gonna go back through and do.
Is that an improvement situation line?
Yes.
Did they have to take out that, put a deposit on that?
There was a couple of different spots they did, and then they said they weren't using them, so they got the refund back, and then they went to a different location.
So they never had a deposit?
So they don't have a deposit on that. But it is a force of the job, so what was required of them in the past, I believe they still do, which is just, there's a lot of, some lines of water barriers up through there, and they filled some of them in, and leveled some of them out, they get through them, and if they're done, they need to go back and re-shape them, then the town, what they're gonna do, what we feel decent under the rest of the road. We wanna catch the road before it gets real bad, because then it just costs a lot, and we, on our agreement, we, with the state, we say that we will take care of our Class 4, just because of the amount of money that they've been putting through in the past.
So have you, you wanted...
I just let you know, by Bill and I, we've got a whole way to the forest there, and see what they get to say, because I don't know if they're done logging, nothing up there. But they pulled out last year, because of the winter, I believe.
Well, we have a member of the GIA here, I don't know if the people into, let us know whether they're finished logging or not. Hello?
No.
Okay, nothing wrong, sorry.
We're fine though.
Danny, on 30, 35, heading towards the best of the guardrails, center of the area, should those come in here?
I'm gonna have Woffie come down, and give us a price on them. We bought some of the fixed firewood, and then we had a couple more trees come down and damaged it, and that was, there's enough of the damage, right, we're just gonna get a price on whatever cost to have that coming, and fix some of the sections.
Thank you.
Anything else with Danny? Okay, you're on, you there? Kim?
I'm here.
I get it, all right, you got, you're on, vote by some, send another.
Okay, I think you guys just got a copy from Bill, we only had eight people on there so far, and these are only people that were registered last year, but are not this year. So between Michelle and I, and anybody else that can chime in, we're on the lookout for animals that we know of. We're not doing a door-to-door, only because of the COVID, but we do know people that are out there that have one, two, some of them up to five dogs, that have never been registered. I will compile that list to give to Mike, our constable, but in the meantime, I'll give a copy of this to Mike also, and then he can, with your permission, it's time for him to contact these people, because I've reached out to them multiple times, we've had signs up and reminders, and we've gotten nowhere with a few of these. As for late fees, we really can't, we can't commit to any late fees until 90 days after the state of emergency has ended, so we still can't collect on any late fees, even though they are late. We probably will, depends on when the governor changes the state of emergency. So that's it for dogs, do you have any questions on that? Okay. Taxes were due today, they may be postmarked, if they are postmarked, we'll still accept them without an 8% penalty. Anything after the postmark date will then become delinquent, and there will be an 8% penalty charge on them. But it's looking pretty good, people have been, we gave multiple notices to people, and anybody that needed catching up, we've sent out reminders to them, so we're doing everything we possibly can, we being Michelle and I, to make sure everybody's on board and up to speed, and not getting caught in that 8% if they don't have to. There's, just keep BCA reminder that this Thursday, the 20th, there is a webinar that I sent an email out, asking for anybody that wants to sign up for it. We will, there's a chance we could be coming up on some tax appeals. The informal hearings will be happening this Thursday with the new assessors, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, then there's a period of awaiting time, and then they start, the listers will start their grievances. Then there's a period of time when the grievance ends, that we can then begin the appeals if they're not happy with the decisions from the listers. So, especially with all the new JP's and all the laws that have been changing, and all the guidance from the CDC, it probably would be a good idea if you could at least chime in and watch the webinar on Thursday. If you can't watch it, I believe they'll probably be recorded, or you can just come in my office, I believe Wendy's gonna join me on Thursday, and we're just gonna watch it in my office. Just for, in the future, I did talk to Cheryl from the WNESU School Board of Westminster, and Westminster is having a town meeting for the school for a vote on June 29th, and tentatively, it looks like we may be approaching one for August the 31st. Not exactly sure, I believe it has to do something with electing school board members, how to deal with the budget, now that we have become split, and Westminster will be going their way. So keep that in mind, that'll be happening, that'll be an all-day ballot again, so that's the end of August. That's about it for now.
I don't know what this is.
What is?
John, I talked to Kim about that. Kim, explain to John about the bill from the sheriff, remember, you and I talked about this point?
Right, the sheriff's department is contracted for one large amount, and so they divide it on a monthly basis, so we pay the same amount every single month, and they're just like any, like the insurance, MVP, or dental, we pay a month ahead, and so the report that you're getting attached to it is for what they've already done, but we're always paying $408 a month, that's how they schedule it out. So you wanna keep track of, like, looking and making sure the prior month that we're at least getting the hours that they supposedly say they all out, so many hours per month for us.
Just wanna remind the board that the contract is up, I think, June, so we could have, we should have them coming here, and I know there, there's a few board members here are not happy with this away, so give us an opportunity to restructure the deal. Have a look on the agenda, so we can get the information, the operating time.
John? I forgot that, I told Tim Morton that you would take, he's on, I knew you'd take him early, so if you want to go to that.
Sure, if anyone have any objection to that, can you talk to the supervisor along?
Does Kim have to stay on with the auditor?
Yeah, yeah, she should.
Well, if you wanna handle the auditors, I can handle the auditors in two seconds, unless there's a big controversy about it, as we've done for the last five years.
The order is, so Kim is on, let me go to the...
As last, last three or four years, the auditors sent us a proposal at this time of year, they're a month behind, and I talked to Fred DePlessis the other day, they're a month behind because the tax year, the IRS extended for a month in Aprils to May, so now they're done, and he said in the next two weeks, he'd have a letter out to the town.
All right. Okay, so I guess we'll move down to the situation of the logging.
Bill, do we, I'm... Do we need a motion for that, to accept the professional auditor's engagement?
He's given us the, has he given us the price and everything?
No, but is it okay that we don't send it out to bid, as for our bid policy for professional people?
Somebody make a motion to that effect? That we don't send it out to bid and we accept his proposal? I just wanna point out that, I don't know how many people have experienced auditors, when you change auditors, the only price only goes up, and he's been very fair, he's been doing it for all these years, and so my recommendation would be that we just continue, unless you wanna go through the bidding process, the unit process, and stop somebody new who wants to change everything that did thus.
Yeah, and I just wanna be clear, as I sent out to you that statement from the purchase policy, that is a statement, professional people, you do not have to send out for bid, if they're familiar with the job, in your opinion, it's more efficient to do it that way.
And it's actually also less than $25,000, and that's the case as well, too?
That's correct.
So if somebody wants to make a motion to the FEC? We don't bid, the order doesn't waste his contract or proposal for this year?
So?
You have a second?
Yeah.
John got it, and Kathy make a motion. John, second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor of not sending out the bid for the order this year, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that's sort of it then. Okay, we have a, I guess we have, the question now with the, oh, before, yeah, sorry. Before us is, should we or shouldn't we not log in summer? And that's, that's the question. So who would like to speak on pro and comp, or why we should or shouldn't?
Perhaps I can give a little background first?
Go ahead.
Okay, so thank you, everybody. I relayed the request from the high bidder for the town park harvest from Longview. Currently, the contract specifies winter conditions, and, or I should say, winter, winter conditions. The reason we went with that originally was because, up until recently, I still have held out hopes that we could rely on winters in the Connecticut River Valley. We don't know, when putting something out to bid, who the crew is going to be that wins the bid, and what capacity, capability is. When we did the layout work there, the ground presents as very wet with wet site indicators and some wet areas for the access and the land. Usually, when you make a change in a contract, it's because something has changed. I can tell you that perhaps some of our feelings about the site and winter have changed even in the last six months. When Ann and the crew built the access and the landing, it was a pleasant surprise that the parent material under the, sort of the wet layer was really quite good, so it's a drier place than we imagined. I really had felt like we could have a real winter in the Connecticut River Valley, that it would happen again. We didn't, we haven't had one now in five or six years. I attended a professional conference outlining winters in the valley, and consistently everywhere, they're warmer, they're shorter, warmer, and with more thaws, so they're not nearly as reliable as we'd like for winter conditions. We did, the crew is a known crew, I know they're adept at low-impact harvesting. They have small shipment, hand-cutting crews, and they have dozens and dozens of crane mats, you know, that you'd see at a power line site, for wet spots to drive on. I think we're starting to feel like July and August is a more reliable time to log and harvest in the Connecticut River Valley than January and February, although there's no guarantees. Trucking conditions have been better in the summer than winter, and we might get the ash trees. and we might get ash, or the camera dash, or, or. So, for all those reasons, I think it's a reasonable request. I don't think it's guaranteed that we have to do this, we consider it. The downsides of changing are that in the summer, the harvesting noise, generally, their jobs are very quiet, but at least the trucking, people would hear because their windows will be open. And it's, we could get wet periods in the summer, just like we're doing in winter. They're a little easier to manage in the summer, unless they're something like Irene. I think if you, if we end up doing this, then we would certainly premise it on that the fact it would be under hot, dry conditions. And typically getting drought periods July and August, which would be really positive. But if that didn't happen, we would have to just back to winter. If the conditions change dramatically during a summer harvest, then they would need to leave the job and come back, you know, this winter here is dry. So, that's background. I'm, I'm here, if you wanna ask me questions, I know you wanna hear from your folks in town, and, and obviously, the decision is up to the select board.
Tim, I'm wondering, sort of what's the impact on the village itself? I'm thinking the example of the inn. Are there going to be big logging trucks running through the village at certain hours? And so, what are those hours? And sort of what will the impact be on the village and the inn? And, you know, given that we are a tourist economy here?
Sure, I mean, the impacts, there'll be trucks regardless of when we do it. The contract specifies that the trucking has to occur Monday through Friday in normal business hours. I think that if windows are closed, it won't be any different than any other trucks at Ustown in the summer. So, I don't know if it's a huge change, but it, there will be certainly harvesting trucks. I think if we have, with this particular crew, the harvesting will progress at a rate that is reasonable, so there aren't any, there aren't numbers of trucks every day going through.
And my understanding was, I think from reviewing the contract, that in the wintertime, you actually can do the logging evenings and weekends, whereas in summertime, you're sort of committing to weekdays for your business hours, would that be?
I'm not sure if that's correct, I was just looking at that. Hang on, I've got a bunch of windows open.
I think it said in the winter that they could do it on the weekend.
I thought so.
It may be that we allow for some work on the weekends, but I don't know about trucking. I wish I could find that, I just had it open, hang on a sec. Respect this.
Tim, it's number six letter in.
Okay, just give me one moment. I, I don't think that's accurate.
If I could just ask a question, kind of clarify one of Sue's questions. What is normal business hours? I see something in here that talks about 6:00 AM. And I just am concerned, as an inn proprietor, of a truck going down the street at 6:05 AM is not being disrupted to win guests. So, I don't know what normal business hours means, I'd just like a clarification on that.
The, what it says here, due to proximity to a village, no trucking of forest products will be allowed from 7:00 PM to 6:00 AM on weekdays. So, you're reading it, you're flipping it around. So, the, yeah, so 6 to 7, they could be moving wood. It is a contract item. It's something we could have done differently, but this is what we currently have, based on the showing in the contract. I don't think that you have restrictions on any other trucks in town, am I correct?
I'm not sure, I don't think there's any restrictions, except, we, we, am I correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can understand the concern, it doesn't seem, I wouldn't think it would be fair to impose. We're already imposing more strict conditions on the town's job than any other trucks in town. And we would keep this, I would recommend we keep this standard as far as whether we, you know, if we do this in the summer. It's also possible we could, we could discuss with the idea of changing a bit in recognition of accepting a summer job.
It's really more that this is adding additional trucks to doing this project. So, there'll be the existing trucks that go up and down, because this is adding more trucks. And during the summer, I'm a business owner here, and we're coming off of a very challenging year, and we're trying to get back on our feet. And with all of this going on, when we hope that there's going to be tourists returning to Grabton, I just feel like it's an unfortunate time, right in the middle of what we hope will be a summer tourist season.
Alan, you, since you're on the committee and you are involved, do you have any feelings either way, would you be shared with the board? If you're so excited to do so?
I listened to Tim, and his comments are interesting. Things I hadn't thought about. But your concerns and the difficulty, those are shared with the loggers and other people who are trying to make a living too, you know? So, I think we all have to recognize, we're all in this together. My original feeling when I walked that lot with Tim was water-related, and like he said, we found some soil in places. Didn't look quite as bad as we originally thought. But I really think a winter job, if we could have one, will leave us with a better quality residual stand. The equipment, if we can get frozen ground, the equipment really doesn't do much damage in the wintertime. If the, if the part of the thinking is that having a timber sale now in the summer, and with everything we're following with lumber prices, that that means the town would get more money, that would be a false thought because the prices are already set. And even if the logger gets more money, when he sells the logs, we, we've already determined what our value per thousand is going to be. So, if that's part of the thought process on some people, I would want to correct that. I appreciate Longview, and I would be much more comfortable with Longview than any number of other loggers and their kind of equipment for summer operation. But I think all things considered, if we could have a winter job, we'd be more satisfied.
I'm just making my, my, my.
Just one other question, I don't know if it can be answered. How many trucks are we talking about here? I have absolutely no sense, couple a day, one a day? I don't know if it's even a fair question.
I don't have the tally, let me look at the tally, hang on a sec. Just to, while I'm looking at the tally, respect this. The pricing thing is interesting. Lumber prices, along with any number of other things, are going up. But raw material prices are not going up. We have not really seen a change in timber prices. And the reason is that the bottleneck is not in timber harvesting and tree growth. The bottleneck is in capacity of sawmills, and capacity of the world to replace parts and that sort of thing. So, I think someone's, someone's making money right now, but it isn't, it isn't us. And it isn't the industry, because it's happening in a different place. Let's see, 115,000 board feet. So, if that cuts out, say 100, that's 114. It's probably about 50 loads of wood over a two-month period. So, one, depending on how things go, it could be one to two loads a day, and they get out of there sooner, or it's one load a day, and it takes a little longer because of conditions. It's a fairly, as far as timber harvesting goes, this is an extremely small job. It's dramatically smaller than the things that have been occurring around the village in the last couple of years.
Can anybody tell me if there's any other logging operations going on? Because the last two summers, I got three logging trucks a day going by my house, had nothing to do with the village park. A call coming up from the top of Inkle Brook. And they're, and they're, they took a bunch of chippers up there a couple of weeks ago, which kind of means they're probably logging.
Danny, do you have any, are you aware of any, anybody asking for a permit, I said permit or whatever?
No, it's the same log job up there. I thought they were done on that one, but they're using existing roadway. There's no permit.
I'll just, I'll share you my feelings, just my feelings. I'm gonna log in summer. We have an extensive trail system for, it's a main vast trail that goes to a public, so the people who, we add a graphic to go anywhere they wanna go. And we, we have riders here, and riders here in the week, and we were very concerned. So, I logged the last two winters. And we had an agreement with the logger, we did, we only, we did not use any of the trail system. We created new trails, logging trails. We only, we only went by the trail on, on there, it just crossed me. At the end of the season, we had absolutely zero damage to our trails and property. And I, I, my feeling is, I'm against summer logging. Logging should be done in winter, that's my feeling. I'm moving on.
Let me just, I would say that, I just wanna remind folks that I'm relaying requests for Longview. I don't have a strong opinion either way. I clearly, winter-only logging would be the end of the industry in the state of Vermont. But there are certain places where winter is more appropriate, and I would encourage the select board to not do anything they're not comfortable with, because we have an existing agreement that's been signed by both parties. And I will be happy to manage the job whichever way you decide to go.
Tim, thank you very much for saying that. I, as I listened to the discussion, and one of our challenges as a select board is to always strike a balance. And it seems to me that on balance in this discussion, the winter logging with using the existing contract is preferable to all the interests involved. And let me be really clear, Tim, you said we have an existing contract, and that we could live up to the original agreement called for winter logging. So, if I move that we use the original contract that we have for the timber sale, and that would entail winter logging?
Do we have a second for that?
One second, Tim.
Do we have any other questions on either board members or anybody in the audience here? Any opinions? If not, I should call a vote on Sue's motion. The motion is to, that we use the original contract and do our logging this way. So, all in favor of just doing the contract as it was originally signed, which would be winter logging? Say aye.
Aye.
Anybody propose? Okay, so, Jan, so, we will have no trouble logging this year?
At least not on this particular.
Not going to tell her, Alan, sorry.
Yeah, thank you, that was very fair and deliberative, and I'm, I'm perfectly happy with that decision. My only question is, Alan, or was someone expecting me to be available for this, to discuss this map that Alan sent out, or is that another issue?
Well, as I understand it, I'm not quite sure exactly, but it's not on the agenda.
Okay.
For the part, and we have a policy here that the agendas are posted on Thursday, and it's not being voted, and it might be, I'm being interested in this map, as I would be. So, I made my suggestion to the board, the board's up to, they have to amend the agenda, but then we would put this on the, on the agenda for the next meeting, which was June 7.
Mr. Chair?
I would like to comment on the map I sent and the points I collected. And I'm very comfortable doing it in public comment, which I understand there would be no vote and no action taken. It would only be information sharing on my part. And the reason I would like to speak is relative to the proposed, or the research being done on possible waste treatment there. When two, two meetings, there's been conversations, and you folks can hear everything very well here. But if you are home on a computer, I can hear you folks if you speak into the mic. But when Matt spoke, he stood near the mic, but I could only pick up about half of what he said. And the first meeting, he talked a long time before I even realized he was talking about the village park. The second time he talked, from what pieces I got out of it, I understood that the site was too wet. But when I asked Bill for the minutes, the minutes reflected different than what I thought I heard on the bits and pieces. That's what I'd like to speak to. I'm very comfortable just doing it to share with you my thoughts, and do it when no action can be taken tonight. And then if people wanna raise the issue, and it's an item that requires action, you can do that in a future meeting.
My only, my only question, John, and I might refer to Suzanne. We have no idea at this point in time whether or not that's a good site or a bad site. We have no idea whether or not it's gonna take place there or not. We don't even know whether or not this is gonna be brought to the town for discussion. So, I think it's all premature, quite frankly. And, and there'll be many opportunities. And I, I defer to Suzanne. It'll be meetings, discussions about going forward, and all those kinds of things. And I, I'd like to keep that respected, because right now, there is nothing, there's nothing that we, and we have no, unless somebody here knows, it's I don't, I think, there's no, there's no discussion. I mean, there's no, no.
Yeah, that's right. If I may, Al, I checked with Matt, Matt's young, unfortunately, he's not able to be here tonight. I checked with him before the meeting. The very next step in the process is to receive the results of the soil test. And that's going to happen at the water committee meeting on the 19th, on Wednesday. So, anyone who's interested, Al would be more than welcome to join that meeting and hear the results of the soil test. And in talking this over with Sue, as representative of the parks committee, it was her very prudent decision, I think, that we wait and hear the results of the soil test. If they are negative, then it's a moot point. The wastewater management system will not be located in the village park. If the, if the soil test is positive, that is, it tests well for the kind of leach field we need. Then, at that point in time, Sue, join me here if you would, we need to get collaboration going between the village park committee and the, and the water study committee. And at that point, talk about what are mutual interests, and how can we resolve those? But until we have the, until we have the results of the soil test, it'll be on Wednesday, I, I take Joe's point that it's premature.
It's your decision, obviously. But I think there are several factors considered. First, you're, you're making a decision based on soil up there. There's a lot of other factors that would say, why are you even looking at the soil up there? And that's, those issues are things I wanted to bring up.
But Alan?
Okay, I'll wait, I get it.
In all fairness, that's just one of the, of the, of the small piece of the puzzle. In all fairness, that's just one of the, of the, of the small piece of the puzzle, whether having wastewater system in town. There's going to be a lot of discussion, not only the village park. Do we need it? Why do we need it? And I think this is all premature. And the only thing we're doing is any discussion about something that we have really no handle on at this moment. And there'll be plenty of time for this kind of discussion. And I'm sure there's going to be people who, even if, even if it tests positive, I mean, if it's positive, we use it as a, as a system. There's going to be people who are going to be against it. There's going to be people who are for it.
Okay.
And, and if people are against it, then we have, then we have to go to another degree if they want to do the system. I will, wait, wait, premature. Not, not just like, I don't have a choice, right? That's how I like it. And I know the Parks Committee would be the same, yeah.
I think it goes without saying, Al, that your input's going to be extremely important to this whole process. I think what we're talking about here is timing, the timing of it. And I, I would, I would really encourage you to participate in Wednesday's Water Committee meeting, if you would. Susan, is that, do you have time? So the meeting is Wednesday evening, 6:30 PM. And it's been posted that I'll, I'll be happy to send you the link so that you can join it in strictly a virtual. Thank you.
Okay, let's go back to the agenda. The next item is the E-911 on the Anderson Road addresses.
A year ago, excuse me. A year ago, E-911 Board, Tyler Hermanson in particular, pointed out to me that Anderson Road was marked and addressed according to the standards in Rockingham and not according to the standards in Grafton. The reason for E-911 addressing is so that you know how far up, up a road you have to go with the ambulance before you're going to get that, to that house, simply based on the address. For instance, my address is 300 Inkle Brook, three tenths of a mile up Inkle Brook, you'll get to my house. If you're a mile up, it's a thousand, okay? And so on. Out there, they use 528 feet instead of 5.28 feet. And so my address would have been 30, not 300. And the, the addresses out there, for instance, an address that's 80, will now end up being 800 and something. It, it is just to have one system for the whole town. That will still leave as a side, the, the small number of people on Cambridgeport Road that is in Grafton with the Rockingham system, because it makes no sense to change it on that road, since it's a very short distance in, in Grafton and most of the road is in, in Rockingham. So all, all of these, I've, I've gone out and talked to quite a few of them. When I went out to look at it, Tyler Hermanson and I did the work. I did it on the ground. He did it virtually. And we got rid of a couple of places because the camps have fallen down, they're not in use. But, but we've also got addresses on places that don't have a camp yet, but are obviously being used by them with, for instance, the tent, they go up there and camp out in a tent or trailer. So it'll all be readdressed. I have the letters all ready to go out if you say that you're okay with it. The deadline is June 4th, I mean, sorry, the date of, the effective date of the change is June 14th. The letters will go out tomorrow. The letter will go out to the E-911 Board, to US Postal Service, to VTAL, to the Rescue Squad, the Fire Department. And depending on what Robbie tells me, I'll either send it directly to Keane, or he will. But in fact, the PSAP, the Police barracks that answers the radio here for E-911, they don't care what I send them, they, they get it, their stuff from the state. So it'll be on, it'll come right up on their computer that 80 is now 800. They won't even see 80, they'll see 800. So then, for the people themselves, they have approximately a year that they'll, that they'll get their old mail, whatever's addressed with their old address. They have a whole year to change it. The sooner they do it, the better, because VTAL and all those people would be changing it anyway. You would hope that they would put their numbers up. And that is part of the problem, that people on back roads don't want people to know they live there, so they don't put their numbers up. But that's also the reason why you want it addressed in the way I described, so that if the numbers aren't up, the ambulance can still find the place by watching its speedometer or odometer as it's going out. So that, that's the reason for it, and it's all clear to do. And all the letters will go out tomorrow to the individuals and to all the entities that will be told that those addresses are changed, unless you tell me not to do it.
So are you looking for a motion?
I, I would like a motion that you agree that the Anderson Road should be readdressed.
Do we want to make a motion? Hello? Just one second.
Second.
Do we have any discussions? Everybody have any other discussion or comments based on Bill's explanation? If not, okay. So all, anybody who agrees to have the E-911 address change on the Anderson Road, say aye. Bill, that starts at the Chester-Grafton line?
Rockingham.
Rockingham, Rockingham, Rockham-Grafton line. Yeah, the first two houses, those aren't ours. Yeah, the first house is... I think, I think he was 80, he'll be 800. I think that's the first house, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken. Anyways, right there at, at the beginning of the road.
Bill, the side roads up there, Marshall over them, are them, how are them addresses?
They must be correct because we, I mean, I would have looked at that, and so would Tyler, so they're, they're probably correct. Because I'm pretty sure Louis Marshall, that his address is really high, and he's out toward the end, so I'm sure it's right, yeah. I'm sure it's correct. If they weren't, we would have done it at the same time.
Okay, so we, so I have a question. So all in favor of making the change? Say aye.
Aye, aye.
Oppose? Okay. Bill, you can send the letters out. Okay, Kathy, you're the next one to clean up on 121.
Kathy, I don't see anybody on here.
Okay.
Okay.
I did speak with Peter from Linden, who's heading up this trash, we move on 121. And he's feeling that his crew that he has, which are, which are active law enforcement folks down in Connecticut, the group's smaller this year, one due to COVID, the other due to the fact that these police officers are under a lot of pressure doing overtime work because a lot of the police officers have maybe retired or are not in law enforcement anymore. So it's groups smaller. If the group gets larger, maybe in the fall, they would tackle the bigger trash dump that's the first dump on Hope Mill Road that's land is owned by Terry Sheehan.
That's the Grafton side.
That's the Grafton side. But there's four to five smaller trash, I'm going to call them dumps, onto 121 from Sheehan's property all the way to the line, Linden line. He has done some removal, not on Sheehan's property, but on the Wagers' property of recyclables. So his plan on June 5th is to have this smaller group come up and tackle the smaller trash sites. He's going to put the dumpster on his property, Peter's property in Linden, and they would backload with smaller trucks with trash. That would be much more manageable. He says there's a lot of recyclables, there's a lot of tires that are going to be picked up. I have not heard from Terry Sheehan, other than speaking to him once, or I should say, Peter hasn't heard from him in getting permission to go on his property and remove that trash. He, it's Terry's feeling that he just wasn't comfortable, and I spoke with him about having anybody on his land. In talking with Peter today, that dump site is a steep incline, and you're talking years and years of trash. Terry, that has commented that he hasn't been up to his land in the last year, doesn't really look at it. So it will happen on June 5th to clean up, fortify the smaller areas. I have one flagger that volunteered, didn't help out. And I have spoken to Don Google from GIA. He had a meeting last week, and he's aware of what we want to do and what Peter wants to do, but he's also interested that this is happening, and he also would like the town in Grafton to kick in some financial assistance, so we know we want something done here. With that, if the town agrees to put in some money to the cleanup, then GIA can do the same. So I'm leaving on this for the board to consider this. And I'd like to see the town, at least contribute some money to this. Last year, or two years ago, did a big cleanup in Rockingham. He said he had a 40-foot dumpster, and the site that we're looking at, the property did two 40-foot dumpsters. And one alone, Peter paid for, was not $900. So it's a lot of, a lot of trash. And he did get a deal with Chester and Springfield Holler Dumpster, for a special price for the dumpster. So, you know, he's working hard, he's got these guys, very interested in helping, and they're willing to vote in votes. And I'd like to make a motion that the town in Grafton would kick in an amount of money on this project.
Motion should have an allowance. Is there any allowance? There's no allowance, you said?
Big to 900.
GIA, GIA, one, you would want, maybe say a little more.
So I make a motion on the trash removal that the town, let's see if he has $800. Second.
Or one dumpster.
Or one dumpster. Second.
My question is, though, that they're not going to be able to do this year, right?
They're going to do...
The, the big one, the big cleanup?
No, it didn't fall.
Oh, they won't do it this year?
Didn't fall, yes, this year.
So it will be done this year?
Right. And there's one happening on 5th for the smaller.
Right, the small.
And I guess I want to add $800 to the dumpster, and we'd like to have the, we need another flagger, that the suppliers will get paid.
Any other instructions on the motion?
Kathy, that Mr. Chair, Kathy, you're going to continue to try to negotiate with one of the suppliers for a, a, a part of donation of the dumpster.
I'm going to be talking with Don Google to see if they're willing to financially help. And Peter has already negotiated with the company for the dumpsters, that is special price.
Oh, yeah, okay, I missed that.
And he would like us to give the, the flag to them.
I'm unclear on the motion, that.
Before you do that, I think you should amend the motion.
Well, that's...
The reason, the reason is, if we're going to pay $800, are they going to pay the $800? And I, I wish the motion to say the town would pay $800 and that GIA is $800. Because if we put $800, who's going to pay the other $800? So he, he made a statement that the town, he wants the town to participate, so we're, so we're putting our money up, so let them put their money up. Yes, Bill?
And then, what is the flagger? You, you said, and we should also pay for the flagger. That should be in the motion, and the amount. If, I mean...
I think the flagger pays $25 an hour.
You know, that was the number you threw out to me. You know what we pay flaggers? By policy, 18 bucks. Now, you can change that, but I just want to let you know, that's what we've always paid, 18.
No, I, I agree with 18, if it's our policy.
So why don't you say, like, we'll pay the half of the flaggers and you pay the half of the dollars, GIA? So instead of $800, let's say, if it's $900, carry it?
Probably.
Each, each?
If, if you're getting, if you're getting the dumpster for, for $800.
Right, but I mean, we have $200, $100 from each entity to pay for the flaggers.
Okay, $900 for dumpster and flagger.
Only, only, only if GIA matches the, the, not, forget it.
Then I have another question. So I don't understand the, I don't understand, Sheehan given permission to go on that property or not?
He has not yet.
Well, then...
We're not, we're talking on the bill on the June 5th right now.
You can, there's that much stuff from the two...
Small cleanup. So maybe we should ask the motion, providing he gives permission to do the land, if Bill can go on the land.
Okay, now, now I'm confused. Is that, the two dumpsters are for the cleanup that's happening in June?
No, on the fall.
On the fall. He's handling the other.
He's handling the dumpster now with the special price, um, the company.
And, and the, and the fall one would be on Sheehan's land.
Correct.
But if there's, if he permits it.
Yeah, but if he doesn't permit it, then we don't have a cleanup. So why don't we add that to the, providing he gives permission to do the land?
So if, if GIA matches, and if Sheehan or the landowner gives permission.
And to that, Bill, it was suggested by Don Google that town administrators send a very strong letter to Mr. Sheehan, cleaning his property yet. I know we have no policy, but at least a letter of some kind of, that we're putting out some money to clean that area up. So landowner knows, we're going to pay here. And Peter from Linden, his, his folks want to clean it up.
I, I think the letter should, should, should not be a strong letter, it should be a letter that the town is willing to clean up your property if you give permission.
Yeah, that's what I was, I, that, that, I was...
That's why, if he, if he doesn't want his property cleaned up, there's nothing we can do about it.
No.
Okay.
If he gets his property cleaned up, nothing, I mean, I can't imagine what he wouldn't, he wouldn't want to do, but strange things have happened.
Kathy, does he need a financial commitment from us tonight? Is this something they could put off a little bit to do a little more work and get permission and work with Sheehan? Or does he need a financial commitment now?
No, he's not looking for it right now. I'm just trying to, that you guys, as to what, where he stands and where his group stands right now.
We can maybe just put it on the...
To the fall. But I'm getting flagged for the 5th.
I'd also like to just check the logging, how far Sheehan goes up that hill before switches to another landowner.
Why don't we just, why don't the three folks take over this and be able to, since we don't have to make a decision until, late October or early September, correct?
Yeah.
So this way, maybe we get permission, and John, you can go check it.
But he is doing a plan on, on the 5th.
Right, yeah, that is another good dumpster.
I'd like the money for the flagger.
Oh, you want money for the flagger.
But, but that, that, Peter, I'm assuming on whose land?
Wagers.
Wagers' land? I would say, yeah.
He's already, according to Peter, from what he's telling me, it's Wagers', Wagers'. He's already, according to Peter, from what he's telling me, it's Boog's, it's Boog's park privately from the mass.
Where then?
Where the, the smaller, all of the dumping.
Do you think Google will pay for the, the, uh?
I don't know. If that, you brought up, your taxes were up so much. I don't know. I'd have to ask you, but you've been away and they're not, they're coming up Monday, so.
When are we going to clean this up?
Um, um, fifth, Saturday.
This, this time? So we, we need to do something. So how much, how much do you want to, how much are you talking about?
We said five, it's five or six hours, so.
So say six hours at eighteen, what is that?
Twenty dollars.
Hundred and eight, hundred and eight, something like that.
You want to make a motion?
We're going to make a motion.
So we appropriate a hundred and fifty dollars for the flagger? Maybe Google will pay for it or not, we'll take.
I do two.
Two flaggers?
Ooh.
Kathy, you're on the hard part.
So I mean, it's two hundred, two hundred and forty dollars, same less than, less than two.
Is GIA willing to split the flaggers with us on June 5th?
I can talk to them on.
Why don't we do it that way? It sets a good precedent.
Yeah, I agree. So the motion is that we're going to appropriate two hundred and.
Let's say two hundred and fifty dollars.
Two hundred and fifty dollars to the flagger and he will speak to GIA to see if they're paying. Do we have a second for that?
Second.
Do we have any more discussion about the flaggers?
Yeah, uh, and on that property, does he have permission to go on?
I sent him the forms that we use. And now we get touch with Google and he's going to have his helpers to come up and sign those forms.
Okay.
So we don't have a deal with permission?
No.
Can you help us, Kathy? I don't see any solutions, Google.
I'm, Bill set the forms.
But he's not here.
He's not here.
Well, you said it's coming up.
That guy was not here, permission was.
He's set the forms, right.
Should we make this one contingent on getting permission as well, since he doesn't have permission right now?
Yeah. Not, not on your.
End that in the motion, though.
I got it.
Contention about getting approval to enter, um, the land. Any more discussions? We broke it up.
Sure.
Okay, all in favor of Kathy's motion to appropriate two hundred and fifty dollars and getting permission from Google to clean up the, what, full sets?
Four or five sets.
Four or five sets along with twenty-one. Say aye?
Aye.
And a both? Ready? Now I can commit it, of course. Would either of you go first?
Uh, does everybody have a copy of the highway access policy?
Yeah.
The, the latest one. After, uh, working with Susan and Bill on the highway access policy and the right of policy, because at the last meeting I made a motion that we should have separate policies instead of this one. Uh, we, uh, made some minor changes and we added some minor things. And we've come to the conclusion that we only need one policy.
Where you did.
We did, we did, we did addition and then the additions, what is in the back? And example of one of them would be, uh, we have a minor permit and we have a major permit. The minor permit, the only cost for that is ten dollars, it's very big. The major one is a twenty-five dollar one and then five hundred dollars at the end. So that's the only difference. And the other changes are nothing, additions to someone or other. But if you read it, if you, if you, if you approve of it, it'd be nice to, uh, hold on it tonight, yeah?
I disagree. Uh, my question is, is that we tonight, are you really need two policies?
Well, we, I thought we did until we went over it. And I think what changed when I was having a minor and a major permit, why should somebody with this kind of plant, a mole shrub or something, have to put it down five hundred dollars?
But you are going to allow stuff to be done in the right of way now with this permit.
So if you look at, um, that's a very, very good question. If you look at section four, uh, your two, and per that required, this was not a change. This was actually in the original highway access policy. It says within the town, all these things cannot be done within the town unless an access permit has been obtained from the select board in accordance with this policy. And so the fact that we're adding a minor, uh, to this policy, it, it now says that the highway foreman, who will be the access administrator, will be able to grant permission based on Danny's assessment of the situation in, in keeping with this section four of the policy.
I, I don't, I'm not so sure I agree with that. I, I think it still should be a stop motion decision. I think the empty go out and make the recommendation, but I think the board has to vote on another, that, that's my thing. I mean, that's what we do.
It may be easier on my part. I mean, a, a driveway access is pretty, pretty simple. But, I mean, you have, as we talked, Susan, you know, you have one person that wants to plant flowers and then all of a sudden the mower goes through and they get, oh, now we have an issue. So I don't, I'm trying to figure out how do I allow certain people to do things and not in other places. Um, you know, it's right in front of their house and they keep it mowed all themselves, you know, it's kind of easy. We're not going to be running a mower there. But then in other places that people have planted bushes, trees or shrubs along their property lines, it's not being a viewer, or as you could say. And we have hit with the over the ground mower and they get really ugly. I understand why they would, but when you're mowing that, a twig don't look like a shrub. A lot of times it looks like a brush.
Yeah, the other problem is that if you, if you have a flower or a bush and you can't mow around it, then if nobody maintains it, maple tree or a pine tree, nobody takes care of it, it becomes a big tree.
Right.
And then you, then you can't, then you have to deal with a tree in the right of way. That becomes another problem down the line. So I, I don't think you should amend it, but you're not a person.
Well, that way it would be the way to solve it, just don't grant anything.
We, I think where we were coming from is the experience we had over on Oakville Road. And Danny said, what would you like me to do? And the first question we asked was, well, Danny, what do you recommend? And it seems that there will be a, a whole set of these smaller issues that Danny will be able to apply his experience and judgment and either deny or, uh, or, or grant, uh, permission. And with that, we don't even see those. And I think we can trust him to be consistent in there in his application of the policy. But then the homeowner would still have the right to appeal and that's when the select board would weigh in. I mean, it just seemed to John and me and, and as we talked it over with Danny, I mean, Danny doesn't really want this responsibility on his shoulders. Because, you know, it's going to make some people happy and some people not happy. But if we don't have a process as a town and as a select board to handle these kinds of issues, we're going to get bogged down in a discussion of five people about whether we put a plant here in right of way. I think Danny's going to deny most of these requests. Might be we have to support him on that. Now, those where he's just going to tell us he's worth making an exception for. I think our founders support him on that, but it just, just might be bad on, on your point about bringing every single one to the select board's attention, Joe.
Well, I think we could solve the problem. You don't have anything in the right of way. Somebody wants something, then maybe make a request to the select board, well, if you're Danny, and then we can deal on an individual basis.
But that's, that's what the application process is all about.
Well, if you change that, though, if they put in a request for it, it doesn't really say that I made the decision on it. I mean, they could fill out a form saying what they want, but it comes, comes to you guys. Um, you know, I mean, probably a lot of people, and they say, we have to fill out a permit for it. But I just, I, I like that, that maybe I bring it to the board of what the request is, um, rather than myself making a decision on, you know, who gets to do what for right of way.
Yeah, I think, I think you have, I think you have to think long term here. Just because, um, Joe, Joe or Mary buys a house and they want to put something in the right of way. For two years to now, they sell the house. And the person, people who have it, they don't want to maintain anything. So now they've got another issue. Now you have to go to the new home and say, you gotta, your bushes are a problem, but I'm doing good. So you gotta deal with it. So why deal with it at all? The right of way is the right of way. You've got to take this big tractor and you've got to keep, I mean, look, 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 look at, for years, you never mowed the right of way. And look how difficult it is in some areas. And how the work that you put into driveway, right of ways, instead of having trees growing in the, in the road again. And to me, I want an exception, have an exception, yes, Bill.
The purpose of the, of this is spelled out in section two, and you got to read that. And basically, it says, you don't put anything in the right of way. It says what absolutely has to be there, which is a driveway, a covert mailbox, and view utilities, that, you know, the utilities is one thing and that's hardly even mentioned in the, in here. But, uh, as far as I'm concerned, you just cause more problems by making it look like they're going to get a permit to plant something there at the very least, or some other thing in the right of way, when your motion the other, uh, two, uh, three meetings ago was perfect. Don't put anything there.
But, Bill, how does that resolve the problem?
You tell them they cannot put the fence in the right of way, period. You, okay, if you read.
They're just going to come back if they don't have.
No, you read the rest of it. Can they guarantee you, for as long as that fence is there, they, that their insurance company will insure the town from any liability?
So, look, I, I.
They won't do that.
I'm not, I'm not going to get into that level of discussion. If it's the pleasure of the select board not to have this addition to the highway access policy, that's fine. But I just want to remind us when we get presented with another case, multiple cases, and we have to deal with this as well, that we might have an alternative then, go back to the highway access policy, with a minor encroachment. That's all I'm saying. Our citizens have the right to have a, 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 a government that listens to their needs, responds in a, in a consistent way and provides them with an appeal process if they get the answer.
Okay, but I just, I just want to say this. The way I see the right of way, there is no such thing as a minor encroachment. It doesn't exist.
You're the one who came up with the term.
Well, you guys wanted to have something that for ten bucks, so, so, so I gave you, I gave you paragraph after paragraph of how you could do it. But if you read those paragraphs, you're going to make them jump through more hoops than they want to jump through. And so they're not going to do it anyway. Because you can't, because you can't have the town assume the liability for people getting hurt by stuff that people put in our right of way, the purpose of which is to, it, it regulates the access to the town highway system. It is the purpose to protect and preserve the safety and convenience of the inhabitants, habitants of the town and the traveling public and to protect the public investment in the highway system through regulation of highway access. And what, what Mark Pickering said, when I talked to him about this very problem months ago, was you don't allow anything in, in the right of way. You don't allow anything there. I mean, you, some people, well, down, down on Athens Road, they wanted us to, to protect them from cars being too close to their front door because their house sticks into the right of way. Uh, Mark says you do not put up guard rail to protect the people off the prop, off the highway. You put up guard rail to keep the cars on the highway, which is for, you know, slopes and things like that. It's expensive to put up guard rail, that, for one thing, but, uh, I don't know. That's just my opinion.
Mark, did you mention to him that the issue on Oakville Road was the safety of two-year-old homes that were down a ravine because the bridge, uh, is.
Well, that's, 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 that's a mother, that's a mother's way of looking at it. The thing is, you know, they, they have the whole yard.
My question.
Yes, I did.
Okay. I just wondered if you'd ask in that.
It is not to protect people. It's to keep cars from going in the river. She has her whole yard to put a fence on.
Mr. Chair, call the trash.
No, I, 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 I have another, um, does anyone have a question? Second, second. All in favor of calling the question or continue the discussion? Call me if you can say aye. Both? Yes?
Both.
I just want to tell a story about Panda Evans. I don't know, Danny, I don't, you were here. John, you aren't a member, you, you are. She planted apple trees in the right of way. And we got into a big discussion about this whole thing. And it took meeting after meeting and it was all kinds of issues. I don't, I don't remember these, but how it was resolved. But you're only asking for trouble because a little bush or a flower turns into something else. And then you've got to deal with the unhappy person later. Just say nothing. Somebody really wants something, let them come to the, Danny, come to the board and the board can make the decision. And that's just my. It's awkward, it was like.
I, I would support what you're saying. And you have to make a policy that's not just for Danny and five people that are here now. You're making a policy that affects the next Danny and the next select board. And I think you're right. Just make it clean. Nothing in the right of way, except for driveways.
I mean, it does sound like, it's all about it. Go ahead, Sam. It does sound to me like what you're saying is, that's our policy. But we do have an appeals process if the landowner feels, we have a special case that should be an exception. And suppose maybe it's so easy, you put a plant here in the right of way, we've made it. So I think one of them, I think I support what you're saying. It does sound like it is an appeals process that these landowners, the right to come before us and make their case. Okay, well, we'll have one of those in front of us now because of the homeowner on Oakville Road. And I, Kathy, John and I are completely amenable to what the majority of the board wants to do here. Uh, we wanted to provide some structure and process, but if that's not what you want to do, great.
I think, I think you're, as we talked before, I see what you're trying to do with it. And like I mentioned, my only problem is, is it's left up to me to make that decision, other than I just deny everybody. You know, and that comes to the board. Um, I mean, while you're putting a policy that is denied by the road formal, I mean, because, you know, because it's, it's, it's hard for me to make, you know, everybody's had mixed feelings over the fence out there. So it throws me in the middle that if I say, you know what, I've had kids, I see where this has value, boom, it's done. Then the shooting on the gaming court comes up. We have the same issue. I say, I, I don't agree with that. I think it's different. And I say, no, it's going to put me in a real bad spot, making the decision on behalf of the board, really. And that, that's the only thing, I mean, as I told Bill before, I said, I, I'd have to deny everybody and let them do the process. But I don't want people to think, you know, doing false hope that, oh, no, he can do it all. And, I mean, I don't, it doesn't look like a win-win situation for me at all. Um, I mean, I, I, if there's a way you can put a policy that, you know, if they want something in the right of way, then they just need to come to the select board. Um, most people, if it's a flower, they don't actually do anything. They just do it and nothing is said.
Okay.
Which is just as easy because then if something happens, we can go, it's in the right of way. But if we, I give permission to it, I think it sets everybody else up for failure if something becomes of it.
I agree.
Um.
Yeah.
Parents, the Hiltonville Bridge, this is my only opinion. And Mark was saying we put up guardrails and stuff to keep cars on the road. The rule of thumb is anything over a three-to-one, the possibility of grounding is an automatic for guardrails. So my feeling is on that bridge, there should be guardrails, at least weeks, because it is a sheer drop-off at the end of the bridge. I'm not saying you put them up for the protection of the kid. I'm saying because the state's policy says, if there's any chance of grounding, leaving the roadway and over a grade, you do guardrails. So that bridge, in my idea, is. So that bridge, in my idea, states and qualifies, or at least just sweeps off four corners. Not just their side, but all four corners.
But that's another issue, that's a safety issue.
Yes.
It's not, it's not a protecting child issue.
And if that is something that you guys, you know, we brought that up before about this, if that's something you wanna pursue, when Lafayette comes down, they can give a price on doing that at, as well. But they need to understand that we're doing it for the safety of motor vehicles, not for their children.
Well, I see, I have the same, I have the same feeling, um, that if, if, if we don't, if we put, if we allow them to put a fence in there, and then there was a problem, then we have liability issues. If we don't put the liability off, and something happens, then we have liability issues. So I think we have to make decisions so that we don't have any liability issues with the town traffic and its residents.
And the homeowner did bring up the, the guardrail there, and that's why I bring up that it has no bench.
But if, if that is the case, that you have to have, there's a reason why you have to have a guardrail. And, and, and that is fits that, that bill of goods, then by all means, we should put it up there. I mean, there's money, and if you want you to do it, then do it, if that's a safety issue.
Well, there's, there's many places around town like that, but when someone brings it to your attention, and I think it just puts up a red flag. Um, I would think if we at least, when Lafayette comes down, I don't know any other guardrail companies, so I use Lafayette.
They're the only one I remember.
We can at least get a quote from them on doing that, do it at the same time, possibly. I don't think you have the motion.
No, I agree with you, because you said, no, the price, you have to do it. But we got, how are we gonna change this policy?
I think we're not, I think we're just gonna go back to the original highway access policy. What do you think, John?
I think so.
I mean, we're fine with that, um, I mean, this has been a great discussion, this is what we're here to do. And I think Danny's come up with a wonderful solution for the Hopeville Road situation, if, when we get Hopeville Select Board goes ahead and approves. So, great. I mean, do you feel the same way, John?
I have a question, though.
And thank you, Bill, for helping us with this.
You're welcome. This says that a permit is required for all those things, and under section four. What do we do with the motion from three months ago, three weeks ago, or three meetings ago?
Well, we already, we already had a motion, and Danny goes in the, in the right of way.
That's not what this says.
No.
No, but we're scrapping this, Bill, that's what we just talked about.
With the original plan.
We're just going back to the original highway access.
No, the original highway access says, no person shall install, develop, construct, regrade, resurface any driveway entrance or approach, or build a fence, or building, or deposit material of any kind within, or to in any way affect the grade of the highway right of way, or obstruct the ditch, culvert, or drainage, or course that drains the highway, or fill in a grade, and so on and so forth, so as to divert the flow of water within the town, unless an access permit has been obtained from the select board in accordance with this policy.
But, no, this was in the original highway access policy. That was not changed by us in this discussion of the right of way.
No, that, this is the original.
The original change, why are you questioning the original? Why, I, I, I'm lost.
Because you made a motion that you're not gonna permit anything in the driveway. Whether they get a permit or not, you're not allowing it, so what is it?
We withdrew that motion.
No, you did not.
Well, I, I made the motion, so I withdraw it.
We're voting on that motion, it's a couple of million.
That, this is exactly what I'm talking about. If you're, if you're gonna change that, if, if, if you're going back to this and, and not doing that, then you need to do that.
What do we need procedurally to go back to the original highway access policy?
Reverse your motion from a month, or two months, six weeks ago. Reverse your motion from six weeks ago.
I, I moved the motion from, uh, the meeting in-
It was in April, I'm not sure which one it was.
I moved to reverse the motion that Bill just mentioned, so that that highway access policy, as originally stated, is, I don't know what, um, that's the right. Remains in fact, remains in effect, thank you.
Do you have a second to that?
Second.
Bill, Bill can check the piece.
Yeah, I just looked at, it's like April, whatever that was.
Who told?
First, yeah, three meetings ago, yeah.
So any discussion on that, the first motion? Does any favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So now we-
The parks committee.
Now we have one more item on the highway, can you get John?
Oh, yeah, okay, well, I'm sorry.
So, uh, after that, this discussion is gonna be just the cherry on the icing of the cake. Um, and, uh, I'm passing out a revised price quote from the TRANDS for the cost of the bridge. And I call your attention to the last column called preliminary, called update, and the highlighted, uh, row labeled preliminary in the area. And the price has gone up $85,000.
From, from the last time we had the view?
That is correct. So the, you'll recall, I think, in the minutes of the last meeting, the total cost of the bridge was $5.05 million. The total cost of the bridge now is $5.136. This is, once again, uh, an error that was discovered by the TRANDS team that in their quote of $5.051 million, they omitted the $85,000 cost associated with COVID, and the fact that their interim crew could not do the work because of the deployed on, uh, COVID relief. And therefore, they had to hire external people to do the work. The $85,000 has always been there, it has now come to light. And, uh, so I just wanted, John and I just wanted to inform you of this, um, correction of the error. The cost of the bridge is $5.136. Uh, in our meeting with Carolyn, we asked her for consideration over the week, for that $85,000. That was originally suggested to us by Ken Recker and others. Um, and I did hear from Carolyn late this afternoon that she has discussed this possibility with her boss, and that it is working, it's a chain of command in their project bureau, uh, delivery organization. So, uh, project delivery bureau. So, John and I will just stay on top of that in our, in our meetings with Carolyn. But I did want the select board and our citizens to know that there is consideration to be given to COVID relief for that $85,000. We may or may not get it, though.
I, I would like to highlight a requirement, for me, to talk to the TRANDS. I'm very concerned about what I heard at the meeting, where they said they had anticipated cost of, uh, relief, cost of materials. They have put this into the, into the price. I think they're full of a hole. When, when you listen to Danny, and COVID's going, and steel's gonna be through the roof, fuel's going through the roof. And I would, I would like to have a letter from them saying that their costs, their, um, analysis of the cost increases based on inflation are true, and they will not go up. Because I think you guys, if you don't, you think this, you know, $5.136 is not gonna be the final number, I think. It just can't be. There's no way in the world, a month has happened, two, two years ago, a year and a half ago, whenever it was, that they had any, any idea what the cost of materials was gonna be. They had no idea. So, it's like, I think we need to have a, uh, I think we have to have a, a meeting with them, and they have to be realistic. So that we don't get another surprise another year from them. That's, that's my fault. I just can't see how they can keep their estimated cost. I just can't see. I mean, no one, if they, if you have anything, college is gonna go away, then it's good to know. And this is just the beginning.
I think you're gonna end up not getting started.
And we don't even know whether that gonna even happen. You know, they're sure this is everywhere. Are they gonna meet the deadline of 2023? I don't, I don't think so. I mean, you order a new car, they just, in the thing, they can't even deliver the car, there's just no checks.
No, you're, you've got a very valid concern, and we definitely take that. I think what happened as of tonight is we kind of put the original quote, we're getting it all squared away, revitalizing our communication with the TRANDS and all of that. I think that's now done, and now we can start looking forward. And I think your, your question is excellent, John.
I have no faith. I mean, they, they're not, they have proven to be unreliable. And just because she said that they made this estimate of what the inflation cost was gonna be, I, they would have to be some kind of genie to figure out what was gonna happen in this world, I'm sorry. I just don't think they are.
As much as I would love to get that letter from them, I would anticipate they're not gonna make it. So I'm sort of wondering, what's the value of asking, and where are we going with that?
So that's made of harm, when the price goes up another $400,000. People, the board can say, we have done everything that we know how to do, it's beyond ours.
But I guess what I'm asking you is, when they say, no, we cannot give you that letter, we can't commit to this price, because we don't know what's our outcome, what are, you know, what are in game. I, I would be shocked if they gave us that letter in the fourth year term and we held it up, right?
I don't think, I agree with you, I don't think we're gonna get, I, I think the dialogue is what's gonna be important. I mean, we can't be the only town, the only bridge project that is facing these kind of price increases. And what is the TRANDS, as, as an apartment government, doing about it? I mean, for example, I don't know, but one possible outcome is, they could tell us how they're changing their formula to take these inflationary prices under consideration. They could possibly bracket for us, your cost by 2020, 22, or 23 will be between this and that. Uh, for sure, we need to start having a dialogue with them, so that we've got our oar in the water, uh, as, for, for the town. Yeah, so I, I think the communication factor is gonna be really important here, and that will drive the outcome.
Anything else on the highway?
Nope, you got that, John.
I have one.
Go ahead, John.
Um, Bill read, uh, the law, or, well, they read the, uh, policy, which referred to the law. What do you do when somebody does fill in a culvert ditch? What, what's your, how do you deal with that? Somebody putting debris in the ditch and not cleaning it up?
No, I, I-
So again, the policy we have, we ask and hope for the best, but 90% of the time, we as a highway crew go out and clean up the mess. So we do not get the image down. Then we have all these policies, and we just do not enforce them. And we, we, the highway department, we try to enforce them, but we are not supposed to.
Well, I just, I've seen somebody fill a ditch in, I wonder how you fix it. I guess you ask, if you're, if you, if he or she doesn't do it, then you, Danny goes out there, excuse me, who cleans it up? That's the bottom line.
Yep, that is the process that we are in.
Well, Danny, didn't you have that situation up on the, on the road, with that crazy guy who's gonna go build something up there with the old service sideless, and you just dump a wall of crap in there, or stone?
They have, I mean, I don't know, some people just go and do what they want, but most people, if you ask them, you know, it works sometimes, and they fix what they've done.
All right. Okay, um, anything else?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anyone on the highway? If not, the, the parks, um, there's really nothing. I mean, we're, Sue, Sue and I got me, with, hopefully, on Friday, to deal with the insurance issue. Our fines are on there, and so that's it, so unless you have something to do that we wanna put out?
No, other than because I was sitting here, um, we may reach out to you to comply with our insurance coverage. We might need some branches, uh, chainsaw in Village Park, that the insurer now consider a danger to some gym equipment. And I know you're the only one authorized to do chainsawing, so we may reach out and ask you to take care of some tree branches.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
What are you gonna do about that six foot by 10 foot open sister?
We're gonna deal with that on Friday with, um, with the, with the insurance company.
Oh, okay, I didn't-
And they're gonna give us what you need to do, and then we'll get a little fix there.
I didn't completely hear what you said.
Can I, can I ask, did, uh, did those holes in that concrete by the flagpole, did they get filled in, those two little holes?
That, it's actually a, a clay tile that comes up, it's probably a vent for that drainage system that's in there. Do you know where we're talking?
I've seen the tile, but I don't know what it was all for.
I, I'm guessing it was a vent for the water, that water drainage system that's there. Um, no, there's a couple bottles in there, and there's, uh, some sticks in there.
Well, I think you should look, make sure, well, you have the letter, you're gonna go through all those with them. Yeah, okay, and, uh, Matt got rid of the tables at the, at the pond, the table at the pond. It was all falling apart, and you can't do it. You might, as a committee, consider, um, outdoor table there, maybe, maybe not. But if you're gonna do that, like the kind we have down here, that is all weather and lasts forever, you know, that type of thing? Uh, and then, yeah, so, but you're gonna go through all those things with them, so, okay.
So, in case you don't all realize, there is a rebuilt picnic table there now. It's at the, what was the picnic area traditionally. Um, you have to walk in, it's the area that we talked about, perhaps a lead to at that site with the fireplace. There's a rebuilt picnic table there now, I sent pictures of that.
Uh, Alan, now, we all signed the warrants, and it was built for some lumber. You know what that was for? Is that what you used?
Lumber?
Yeah, the Village Park.
Well, if, if that's the case, then that should not have come to you. And, and I doubt that that is the case, because Margot and Matt went and purchased the lumber to resurface that picnic table. And she paid for, as my understanding, she paid for it herself. And then talked to Rob Hall, and Rob Hall, because he originally built and donated the picnic table that she refinished, he agreed to pay for that, so.
Oh, it's, 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 yeah, you were on?
Yeah.
It was definitely on there, John.
Oh, yeah.
Um, yeah, Margot, Margot came in, and, um, she had already bought the products, gave me her slip so that we could reimburse her, but then Rob Hall also made a donation.
Okay, so it was, so it was paid for, so the town doesn't have to write a check, and, well, they wrote a check, but it was covered by, by Rob?
Right, yeah, we're gonna write a check, we're gonna reimburse Margot. I haven't signed the warrant yet, but I, I'm not sure if they're already in the warrants this week, were they not?
Excuse me?
They were. There was a check there for Margot?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And for a beginning sign, we'll have to go through the same system, right? The sign, even though it's being privately donated by Joe, he'll need to root it through the town.
So what are, in this case, Margot did, um, she, she did pay for it, so we reimbursed her that way. But from now on, I don't know how they're gonna, they said there should be no more supplies. But any more donations coming in, they're gonna come in to me, and I'm gonna alert Margot that the donation has come in, and then we'll put it into the, um, Village Park revenue side.
So the town will pay for the sign after the donation is received, correct?
I'm assuming that's what you guys wanna do, yeah.
Doesn't make any difference, whether they're the proper ways, I, I don't care if they pay the sign editor or a letter check to wrap it, doesn't make any difference to me.
Um, I don't know, I guess it's something you guys have to decide, I, I think it'd probably be better, I mean, if someone is donating one particular thing, if they could just straightforward do it and leave the town out of it?
That's, that's-
Is the best thing? Is the best thing? But in this case, it was like a last minute thing that she bought the materials first, not knowing she was going to get reimbursed for it.
I think, Kim, that running it through your books then allows the person to purchase without paying tax on it because it's going to a town, so it would not be a taxable expense. Correct?
Not necessarily. If they don't have our W9, then they don't request it. You know, like Home Depot doesn't, doesn't know that unless you apply and I have to send it to W9s and things like that.
Well, I guess I was thinking in a more personal situation, I've been authorized to buy pressure treated to build the frames for the sign and the kiosk. And was intending to purchase it and I have waited until I actually see the sign so I know just what I need for material. But if I get the materials from WW Building Supply, they said they would give me the, the same rate as if it was purchased by the road crew that went down and bought materials and there wouldn't be any taxes. So you can start talking a thousand dollars, talking what, $60 and that?
Right. We have an account with W&amp;W. So, yeah, they've already got all of our information.
Alan, because I understand that the new sign comes with timber, the sign and everything, all it has to be is installed.
No.
No?
No, we just get the sign and then Al's going to build the frame for it.
That is not what Margot said.
That's why I have not purchased the material.
That's, what you said is what Margot told us.
Which is it?
It's complete.
Well, I'll see, I'm not going to speak of two hours, so I'll clarify that with her.
It was, it was all coming and we, all we had to do was install it.
That's right.
You know, you know, this discussion is really good because it shows you, you guys got to sit down and figure out a system for buying this stuff for the village park that works with the donors and works with the people doing it. So we don't have everybody running out there and somebody's going to get stuck with the bill. So you guys, the park committee should figure out how they're going to do this and work it out and have one system. Then Kim can work on that one system.
Well, Kim, you tell Al you want to do it and we'll do it. But I know that I had a conversation with Margot and she told me, I said, is this complete? Ready for installation? And she said, yeah, ready for installation. So that's, I mean, if she, if she misspoke, then, then.
Well, I'm not talking about the order. I'm talking about the money side of it.
Well, Kim has to come up with an idea of what's the best way to do it.
Yeah.
Let me think about that. If it's best to do a complete, people just donating money and then you guys work off the donations.
If they do the donations, then you can get the tax exempt to the town. But it's like if Al goes over to W&amp;W that picks up that material, unless he has authorization to put it on the town's account, they're going to still have to show tax and they can't just give the tax exempt to anybody. That's correct. And you don't want just everybody, because you had this problem before with cleaning supplies, using the town's account. So if Al's going to go and get it, he should just have authority and we call over and tell W&amp;W that Al Sands has permission to buy this material. Otherwise, anybody watching this meeting who goes to W&amp;W and just say, oh, no, the town said it's good. It's happened before. We got a slip from other people that, what is this?
I'm going to run this by Sullivan Powers first and find out, you know, where do we stand with taking in donations? I mean, towns don't usually take in donations. But I'll, I'll see what he says. If there's anything different, I have to do. Otherwise, we'll do it that way.
Kim?
Yeah.
I had another thought that I reimbied Margot, but I don't know that she mentioned it to you. And that was the Grafton Improvement Association seems to be very willing to participate in renovations, at least financially, helping with the village park. What if they set up an account and people make donations to the Grafton Improvement Association earmarked for the village park? And then that gets you out of it and then we deal directly with Grafton Improvement Association for, to pay the bills. It probably will then take away our option for taxes, tax breaks because.
That's what they're willing and also they're a nonprofit organization, so it's also a tax write-off of whoever donates.
Yeah, they are, they are, I don't want to be seen.
Right, yes, they do. So it's a tax write-off for the donator, for the donor.
No, you're.
In this case, it's not.
By, by going through GIA, like if you pay the money for the sign to GIA, you've made a donation to a nonprofit. So he gets the tax break, correct?
Right.
But they still charge tax on the sign.
I think if I'm the one speaking, I don't have tax.
Kim brings up a valid point. We need that, or Bill brings up a valid point.
No, I think so. Kim, you need to talk to some of Sullivan Powers and see how they want to handle it. And maybe what we need to have, when somebody is going to do this, we have some kind of an authorization form, a new sign that you bring to W&amp;W or to the sign maker or somebody else so that they know that it's, 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 you know, approved. And it's tax exempt so that the sign maker or whoever that's in charge, they sell that. And control it through you. I mean, all the money should be controlled through the, through the board anyway, the treasurer, so that's how. In the end, I mean.
I'll propose not to go along with it, possibly going through the GIA and see what they feel.
Yeah. While we're on this, can I bring up one other thing? When we had our meeting with Mike, Margot, myself and Sue and Joe, we really stayed on task about certain projects in the village park. I was kind of hoping that we would have a little more discussion, kind of in general and in background of, this is the first time you've had a village park committee, this is the first time you've had a group of volunteers that is actively working. Could we kind of sit down and have a discussion, meeting of the minds of how are some of these things going to work? How much freedom do we have to just go do what we want? When do we come and talk to you and get permission? Does it always win there's money? And, and do we report to you what we're doing or do we just do it and hopefully you go look at it? It seems like we, that might be appropriate, but.
Well, let's see how I think about it, but I think as far as I'm concerned, anything that's going to town property needs to be approved by the select board.
Well, you gave me a pretty big carte blanche and said, you have approval to do the sign, the kiosk and the, and the lead to.
And the board will go.
Yeah, just no money, but I got the approval, yeah.
Joe, I think as a member of the select board who's not on the parks committee, it'd be very meaningful to me if some of these issues that came up about the park were first vetted by the parks committee and then brought to the select board with your recommendation. I just think you, you as a committee would have the best opportunity to really look into the detail of whatever is going on.
These are separate questions. I don't see any issues that, that the law, it's not that I do with the committee. That was a, that's a subtle decision. So what other, what other things that are you referring to that issues that, that you didn't resolve?
Well, I can't predict what they would be, but.
No, no, I'm talking about.
Come up with signs and that kind of thing.
Well, that was all done.
Yeah, we didn't, you know, all that.
We did.
Sort of map out the next steps. It sounds like there is confusion about the sign and that might perhaps be my call and then we'll figure that out.
But I, I, we, we thought of all that, you, the board approved. And if, if the committee wants, you know, if they want to meet with the committee, we're, we're really going to be able to schedule another meeting and have it. But as far as I'm concerned, we, we did everything we need to do. And maybe there's confusion on the money. I just assumed that was what they paid for and that was it. Okay. Anything else on the park? Personnel? Buildings and the building committee? There's the elevator project and the town hall upstairs cleanup. We can address those things.
Well, I'll just talk about the elevator. I'm still looking for money. I'd like to get private donations on it, put the people's name on the elevator. It'd be a lot quicker, a lot easier. Wouldn't be the red tape you had to go through to get this money from the state. But what from the state, so if there's anybody out there with $130,000, wants their name on an elevator, send the money. Any, but with regard to the, the state, we are working with the state. It gets, gets kind of confusing working with them and because they tell you what you need and then when you go get that information from them, they said, no, that's too soon. You need to do something else. So what I think we need to do is probably, and I'll bring it to you on the seventh, probably pay for or hire the architect. I think my, the architect probably will only charge us materials, ink, pencil, paper, all that other stuff and printing. He said he would do that and he is not licensed in the state of Vermont, but will work with a person licensed in the state of Vermont who is willing to work on that same basis. And so we may get $10,000 worth of design work and supervision for free, maybe. So that's, now we're down to $120,000. And we have $20,000 on hand, 10 from the foundation.
With a promise of another 10.
With a promise of another 10, but we have, and then we have another 10 in the capital budget. So we, we can try to go ahead. We need the, need the plans, get those to the Vermont community development project people who will then tell us what other things we need. Don't know that we need a whole lot of history because, historical clearance because we're going to be all inside. Do not know that we need a bunch of environmental clearance because we're all inside. So it may be just that. Kim tells me that Westminster has a lift that they say is handicap, it qualifies for handicap accessible. I was under the impression it had to be a standard elevator, but I'm going to check on that to see if we can do something less expensively if you want to do that type of, of an elevator system just to meet the ADA requirements everybody else, else using this there. So we'll, we'll see about that. But that's about, that's where it stands with that.
Westminster had just installed theirs two years ago into their town hall, so it might be something worth looking at.
Absolutely.
But I asked Bill to give Russ Hodgson a call tomorrow when he's in the office and find out if it is ADA comply, comply.
Just to add to that, we're looking at different funding sources, including possibly the whole fund. It might, it might be something there for us.
Well.
And also the state.
Well, just, just to touch on ARPA, I read through that whole thing that came from ARPA. There isn't anything we can do with that money. $200,000, not a damn thing except, except maybe do the engineering study for the sewer, sewer. But there isn't anything else you can use the $200,000 for unless something else comes up with water, sewer or broadband.
Yeah, no, it was a community help, but we might let those folks.
Yeah, but, but what I'm hoping is that if you listen, I'm going to listen, sit in on an hour and a half tomorrow. If you listen to these people who consider everything COVID, then the use of this, this room right here is COVID related. And that's what I'm going to try to do and we can use the $200,000, put, put the elevator in. That'd be really good. You know, but on the face of it, boy, you've got to really wiggle around. Yeah, I know. So, but I, I've been thinking of things, you know, but they're paying people who suffered because of, who suffered because of COVID on just some really weird theories, but they're spending their ARPA funds in other states on stuff that you just wouldn't believe. So, you know, anyway. But I'm kind of frustrated with that, but, and I'll sit in on a thing. Hopefully we can use, that's another source of funds. So VCDP, there is, if, if, if we are delayed for a whole other year, there's the AMSO and then the money from ARPA.
And the Michael's a local donation too.
Yeah. We'll put the, we'll put the names right here, right there on this wall.
Kim, the lift you mentioned in Westminster Town Hall, is that similar to the, they have a church?
What, their town hall?
Yes, because they have a lift, they have a lift, right?
It's, it's just a lift. And she says it's just about like 40 high and you open the door, you go in it, you close the door. It's not totally enclosed and then you have to hold the button that'll take you up.
That's what the church has, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. So it's got to be in compliance, I would think, but.
Well, let's do the research and find out.
Would be, would be nice.
All right, what about the cleanup?
Oh, that's up to, who's on the building committee? All right, you guys got it.
Let's get this, let me try for three years.
We've around and we said, let's just set a date. Let's get everybody to notice that, you know, come look around if the historical society wants some of the things we have here, great, they can have them. Whoever's left at a certain point, we just open them up and throw them out.
So you wanted, you guys want to set the date and we'll, we'll put, we'll put a notice. If you can do it before the 25th, and I can put that into my chairman's report. And so if anybody's interested in, you know, doing this, if you can set the dates before that, that'd be great.
When you pick a Saturday, do you pick a Saturday?
Yeah, what, what we're thinking is that one weekend, everything comes out of the closets, spread it all over the floor here and then invite everybody up. And next weekend.
I, I'm going to have to go through some of this stuff though. I mean, I can't, there is some stuff. And one of those cupboards is filled with tax books that we have to keep. I mean, there is some stuff there that we cannot just spread out to go.
Well, when we're spreading it out to go, you can say, no, that can't go. That's the whole idea.
Well, okay, but it's got, I've got to be available too.
Yes.
Well, let's get a date, you know, do the date, you know, three, four, five weeks from now. It's been three years anyway, so.
And all the, all those old property maps that were here with the plastic overlays, the old parcel maps, they're all down in the map case.
Those were the orthos, weren't they?
Yeah.
Yeah, they were the orthos.
All the orthos with the.
And, and so like when it comes to the maps, that would be something we want to involve the listeners and make sure they're okay with releasing whatever is up here that they no longer want. The highway maps are up there. We need to check with Danny and find out what he wants to keep because you've got the Green Mountain Power maps, you've got the cable. Of course, cable's not there any longer, but you need to know that they were, they were. So there's a lot of different departments that are involved in hoeing this all out. Other than what's in the far back of the room, that's kind of, you know, the hat boxes, things like that, you know, I don't care about that. Cynthia might.
Hey, and everybody, they come in and look at their stuff and they say yes or no. The stuff that say yes goes over here, the stuff no goes in a pile and then disappears. Simple.
I, I know right now you don't want to ask too much of the listeners because they are right out straight with these informals coming up and appointments and phone calls and then grievances, so.
Yeah, I said.
See what we can do.
A month, a month from now or whatever.
We'll work with him. No surprise, we'll work with him if he wants. So who needs to see what?
Who needs GIA?
Okay. Anything else on the buildings? Sue, I think, Suzanne, I'm raising water, you may be excited then, so.
No, I have, you have one more thing if I may. So I'm very happy to let you know that Diana Lawrence has accepted the, with pending select board approval, has accepted the position as commissioner with the administrative role responsibility that Charlie Bowden resigned from. And we had to fill that vacancy. As you know, this position is, has this administrative role, so it requires a certain skill set. People who are willing and able to do the warnings, the agendas, the minutes, tracking the action items and that kind of body of work for the commission. Now, since Diana is probably most known.
Now, since Diana is probably most known to most of you and since she only said she was willing to do it today, I know this is a rush, but I wonder if I could go ahead and make a motion for her to become a commissioner so that she could immediately start to work at the meeting on Wednesday. So I will make a motion and then we can have a discussion. I move to nominate, um, Diana Lawrence as a water commissioner. I'll second that.
Your suggestion? Uh, all in favor, did I?
Aye.
Both? Okay. All right, that was quick. She'll be good. Public comment, is there any public comment? Good. No. I don't think we have any other questions to do.
I just wanna, if I could just mention something. Um, I researched right now, um, just to keep you guys up to date. Um, I had gotten an email that I passed on to, and so I've taken the project back on. It was explained to us that going to our website or email rather than using .org that we, .gov and the security level is much higher. We did talk to Dominia, our IT, and they do recommend the same thing. The security level is a, is a much higher, higher security for cyber threats, which
Kim, Kim, for some reason, you're breaking up. You're breaking up.
Um, and the same stuff.
Maybe sit back or something because it's all breaking up.
So what we need to do is, um, actually change all of our email addresses from .org to .gov. Um, it's a project I'm gonna research and take on slowly. So just keeping you up to date, that's where we might be heading.
Okay. All right, just one last one.
Yep.
Okay. Um, the, the date of the next meeting is June 7th, 6:00 AM here. Um, motion to adjourn?
No, okay.
All right, there. Hold on.